The December 1st meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, which is generally the first and third Tuesdays of each month, we have an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the council on issues related to city business. Typically, the timeframe is 6:30 to 6:55. Sometimes it's a little bit shorter than that, so if you wish to have a scheduled time and be sure to be on, please make a reservation by contacting the city manager's office at 949-8412. By noon of the meeting date with your name, your subject matter you want to discuss, and a phone number. If time permits, after scheduled speakers, we'll have impromptu speakers. This portion of the meeting is not recorded or televised. If you have any questions about this open podium period, please contact the city manager's office. We'll start out today with an HRA meeting. I'd like to call the HRA to order. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the HRA meeting held on November 17th, 2015?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution, well, the next item is, to adopt a resolution certifying the 2016 HRA property tax levy to be $200,000 and approving the 2016 HRA budget of $200,000? Mr. Gettle.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight's meeting is to take action at both the HRA level and city council level on the city budget and the HRA budget. And later in the meeting, we'll have a public meeting, a public hearing, a presentation and a review of the city budget. This is a much, much smaller portion of the overall city budget, and that is the HRA of which the city council also acts as. And back in September, you set a preliminary budget of $200,000 and levy of $200,000 for the HRA. This is the same budget and levy that you have set for the last several years. I know there was even some question at the September meeting about, you know, in 2016, '17 evaluating that for future years because this, the dollar amount in this budget goes to many of our housing programs and staff time devoted to our housing programs. And we feel comfortable with this budget still. We'll evaluate it into the future. But tonight's action is to adopt a resolution certifying that tax levy and budget for the HRA for the coming year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gettle? Is there a motion?
Move to adopt a resolution certifying the 2016 property tax levy to be $200,000 and approve the 2016 budget of $200,000 as reviewed by the council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us back to our city council meeting, and we're going to start out with a presentation of the Spirit of Eden Prairie Awards. And we have staff member Allison Nessie here. Where is Allison? There she is.
As she's coming up, Mayor, I can do a quick introduction of this program. This is a brand-new program at Eden Prairie. The city council members through goal-setting sessions and other discussions, and you'll hear about this again with our budget presentation, we've been talking about more of a sense of community in Eden Prairie and kind of building our sense of community. That's a goal of ours. And what a concept and idea that came out of that, a very cost-effective concept and idea is to recognize those properties in Eden Prairie that kind of exhibit the spirit of the city and put quite a bit into whether it's beautification or even sustainability features, accessibility features, into their properties. So this is the first time this year, these are the first awards that we're giving with this brand-new program, kind of a genesis from the city council in a sense of community. So Allison's going to kind of go through those categories, and then we're going to present our awards this evening to our recipients, at least two out of the three recipients that are here tonight.
Yes, thank you, city manager, Madam Mayor and Council. The first annual Spirit of Eden Prairie Awards, kind of to provide a brief background of what we did over the summer. As our Eden Prairie's building stock matures, the idea to recognize and celebrate property owners who have made significant investments and enhancements came about. Investments and enhancements include not just external aesthetic improvements, but also increasing the accessibility for all users and utilizing sustainable practices and green features. Properties are nominated under three categories, single-family residential, multifamily residential, as well as commercial and industrial. The idea for the awards criteria, categories, and timeline were presented to you at the April 21st workshop. With your feedback from that workshop, staff posted the award announcement on our website through our social media outlets, as well as featured in Eden Prairie News. Nominations were accepted between June 1st and August 31st of this year. After the nominations were received, we reached out to city commission members to seek volunteers who would judge the nominations. These group of volunteer resident judges met at the end of October. All of tonight's award recipients were unanimously selected by the volunteer resident judges, and just we will be recognizing nominations in the single-family and multifamily categories. So, let's begin with the presentation. Our single-family residential winner is Arnie and Jane Rowe. I'd like to have Arnie come up. So, Arnie and his wife Jane have lived in their Eden Prairie home for 30 years. His neighbor wrote in the nomination form, "Don't let his age fool you. Arnie always is working on his lawn and certainly has the best landscaping in the neighborhood." His neighbor who nominated him is new to the neighborhood this summer and said, "I couldn't count the number of times Arnie has come over with a shovel and advice for planting gardens or using chemical-free methods for keeping bugs and weeds away. You couldn't ask for a more courteous or helpful neighbor." Arnie, this is exactly the type of care, pride, and kindness that encompasses the Spirit of Eden Prairie. And as noted, there are two recipients in the multifamily category. The first recipient is an owner occupied Tom and Arlene Howden. They are unfortunately not able to be with us tonight. They were awarded for their exceptional backyard landscaping. The Howdens used all donated plants and recycled materials to enhance their backyard, which faces a walking trail used often by residents within the town home association. We will be giving them their award at a later date. And our second recipient of the multifamily 2015 Spirit of Eden Prairie Award is the Preserve Association. So I'd like to invite up Carol Bombin and Preserve Association board members. The Preserve Association's mission is to create and maintain a desirable place to live with a strong sense of community. The association provides guidelines, facilities, and services to its residents to achieve this end. The Preserve Association represents single-family homes, townhomes, condominiums, twin homes, and apartment complexes, which total 1,693 units and over 5,000 Eden Prairie residents. The association maintains a pool house and naturally-filtered sand bottom pool, five miles of walking trails, 186 acres of common property with amenities including five neighborhood play areas, gardens, sand volleyball court, picnic areas, and lighted tennis and pickleball courts. In applying for the recognition of the Spirit of Eden Prairie Award, the Preserve is proud of the enhancements they have made in the last year by adding two new entry monument gardens and landscaping to support the additions and enhance the identity. They also made the commitment to have a native tree replacement plan that will sustain their natural features well into the future. And last but certainly not least, the largest and most significant project was the updating of the pool facility building for greater accessibility and efficiency for association members. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, Your Honor, and members of the council, as well as staff, Eden Prairie's a great place to live, and, you know, the Preserve has been a longstanding part of Eden Prairie. But I just want to acknowledge that working with the city and the city staff has just been a pleasure because in partnership, we've actually been able to accomplish a lot of things and keep our neighborhoods looking great, as well as our trails. And like I said, Eden Prairie's a wonderful place to live, so thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Congratulations to all the recipients, and we look forward to some great nominations next year. All right, is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval.
Second.
Anything to add or delete? Okay. Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes for the council workshop held Tuesday, November 17th?
Move approval. Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held that same date?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to correct there? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent calendars, or a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to pull for discussion? Any questions on any of that? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Brings us to our first public hearing, which is Eden Prairie Center landscaping improvements. Mr. Gettle.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is a request from the Eden Prairie Center for a planned unit district development review on 35.32 acres. The project for the PUD amendment is a landscaping project. The property owner is seeking to update key landscaping features in and around the entrances to the Eden Prairie Center and approve the aesthetics and refresh the landscaping throughout. There are a number of trees that are being removed, selective removal of trees that are dead, diseased, or in poor condition, and then other trees that are being removed to allow for a better view at certain entrances. The applicant also plans to improve security and sightlines and visibility with this landscaping project as well. The plans are in the packet, and I do know that the applicant is here tonight to provide a presentation prior to the public hearing. And I will note also that the, this project did go before the plan commission, and they did vote 5-0 to recommend approval of the project at their November 9th city council meeting. So with that, we could invite the project proponent up for a presentation, and then the staff and project proponent could answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening. If it's okay, I'll move over to the viewer, so I can kind of cross to what you guys are seeing. Do I need to do something over here besides just put it here?
The camera should come on from the ceiling. There it is. And they'll zoom in on it, technically.
Well, I wanted to bring this aerial photograph in, just to give people an orientation to where we are in the world and what we're talking about. So, I'll, you know, literally take the 50,000-foot view here to keep people oriented. So, this is Eden Prairie Center, the mall, and this is Flying Cloud Drive, right along here, 78th Street on the north side, and then where Single Tree and Regional Center Road come into the mall. And where we're focusing is on this west side here, these two entries are where the project proposal takes place, and there's a consideration for the entry on the north side over here in the landscaping project. So let me get the other plan up here. I know it's very hard for you all to see this, but this is one of the first plans in our packet of documents. And I wanted to say, you know, that we looked at this project through a lens of, kind of, as I said, the 50,000-foot view. About a year ago, my firm, LHB Engineering, consulted with the mall to do a landscape plan, sort of a master plan. And what came out of that were landscaping objectives, obviously, but the focus became these entries over on the west side and the north side of the mall. Really, a concern that had come up over and over again from the mall, and some of the tenants were visibility to the retail occupants and sightlines. There's a lot of, basically, original trees on the site. And so through this project, we wanted to take a look at the trees and what we could do to improve the health of the landscape, but also improve wayfinding and access to the mall, as well as looking at sort of a lower level of planting, what we were doing to really provide a better welcome in terms of the color and cut some of the height of the plants. So I'm going to bring up one of our images that are included in your packet to talk about sort of the before and after and hone in on those goals a little bit. This at the top here is the after. What we're doing in this picture is standing on the intersection of Regional Center Road and Flying Cloud Drive. It's right here. And the idea here is to, you know, look at the trees in a selective way. And we hired an independent arborist to go through the trees in the area of concern and give us basically a report card on how they are all doing. Most of these trees are Austrian pine from the 70s, and a fair amount of them are in poor health. Overall, on the mall's property, there are about 440 trees, and this project proposes to remove 57 of them. And so the ones in poor health were ones that are, you know, either clearly dying or were showing signs of great stress. There are also some ash trees on the site that we are selectively removing. And what we did was basically overlay the areas that Eden Prairie Center had identified were in need of better visibility and looked at the arborist's plan for healthy, the spectrum of healthy to unhealthy trees, and found areas where we could, you know, justify taking some out. The thing that we wanted to do in order to really improve the welcome and seasonal interest was to look at a planting bed and, at the same time, consider the screening that exists because of those trees. So we realized that that is an issue of great concern, especially anytime you're removing trees. You really have to consider what you are now revealing. And so obviously, the mall is interested in revealing the marquee signage, but we also know that there is a large parking lot that surrounds the mall. So we are trying to locate these gardens in locations that, you know, are right at the entries, they start to identify, you know, to people where, you know, traffic will enter the ring road. But we looked at what is in those gardens, and we have a combination of shrubs, which do provide sunscreening, and native species and more traditional garden species. And we can certainly talk more about that. The, you know, I think what we are interested in doing with this project is setting up a planting palette that can be repeated around the perimeter landscaping as funds become available in following years. But this is the first project, and as Rick mentioned, it went through the planning commission. There were certainly a lot of questions about how we were balancing Eden Prairie Center's goals with the goals of the city. And we know that it can be complicated, you know, when you are looking at what we're doing here, which is removing trees and replacing a landscape and trying to turn it over. And we do feel like we're walking, you know, sometimes a fine line, but I think we've done the best we can to try to balance a good amount of screening with opening up views. And of course, we are open to talking more about that and hearing your questions and concerns. Thank you.
Questions?
I have a question right off the bat. You said that your tree inventory indicated there are 447 trees on the property?
That actually didn't come from our tree inventory. That is based on about a decade-old survey and a current survey. The tree survey looked at the three areas that we're focused on this evening, and there are about 100 trees in the areas that we're looking at.
And you're taking over half of those trees, then?
We are, and I did forget to mention that we are putting several trees back. So we have been working with the city forester to talk about tree replacements and the types and where we're putting them. So we're meeting the tree replacement requirements.
One of the things that you mentioned in your materials is the fact that you're introducing not only more color, but also pollinator-friendly materials. I've looked at your list on page L102, I think it is, of landscaping improvements, the planting schedule. I'm not an expert on pollinators, but I do have a list of pollinator-friendly materials from the University of Minnesota, and I don't see any of the plants on this list as pollinator-friendly.
We did put together a planting palette I brought tonight for the client several months ago, and I'm just going to put it up here, and we can talk about some of those plants.
Okay.
Not all of them are on, you know, the list from the U, but we, our group has gone to several seminars about pollinator species, and usually what we try to do is find a balance of things that are more traditional cultivated and native. So we've got some native species in our palette. Babtesia is a native false-blue indigo, and that is considered a pollinator species. Also, the native aster, it's called New England aster. I know it doesn't sound like it's native, but it's considered native adaptive. Also, a non-native pollinator species is our sedum, which the, the specific name is Autumn Joy. And I'm sure you've seen, it's the stone-crop sedum, so it's the bigger, the bigger ones. They usually have a reddish color. You'll see a lot of bees on them, so those are also considered pollinator species. And one thing that we honestly, to be honest, we hadn't thought about were opportunities in the tree canopy. And so when we worked with our arborist, he suggested tilia, which is basswood or American linden, you might know it as. And so we've selected a variety of that as well that's considered a pollinator species. So it is not the entire palette, but selections within that that would be considered pollinator.
Okay, on that same form that L1.02 document where you have, it's called planting schedule, I'm kind of confused because you have it broken down by area, and when I total up the trees that are planned to be planted in each area, I get a total of 72. And I'm wondering what the big discrepancy is.
In terms of a tree count and tree replacement?
Yes, because the document, other documents show that you're replacing, you're going to be planting 42 trees.
Right. I'm thinking that, we went back and forth with, again, the forester on this, some of those can't be counted towards tree replacement because they're an ornamental tree, and the tree replacement ordinance expects you to put back something similar there. So we're taking down a lot of evergreens and some ash trees, which are an overstory tree. So in certain areas, we have crab apples, for instance. We have maybe five or six of those.
Which never get very tall.
No. So we can't count those towards a replacement. So without going through this one by one, I'm thinking that's what it is.
Okay. And then, in the documents, it indicates that 2/3 of the trees that are being removed are coniferous trees. And am I count, how many are you replacing? How many coniferous trees are you putting back in?
The majority of the coniferous that we're putting back are around the target wall. That's an area I haven't really talked very much about. It's a slope on the backside of the loading dock. Have to take a quick peek here. It looks like, well, in my recollection, it's not 2/3 that we're putting back.
2/3 you're taking away.
Right. But we, I think what you're getting at is, you know, are we doing the same amount?
Yeah.
But in replacement? No, we're not. And we did talk, again, with a staff member about that, and there is some exception for the type that you put back if it's not appropriate for the condition. And so where we're using those is an area where we feel a screening is important around that loading dock wall. And we're putting the overstory trees around the perimeter where we're trying to create a new template of landscaping.
I'm just a little concerned about the reduction of screening of everything else here. Personally, I would rather look at a little bit of a loading dock wall than a sea of cars. So I'm very disappointed that the coniferous trees aren't going back into some of the areas where they currently are. Anybody else have any questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, a couple of things. I'm glad you're proactively taking out the ash trees, as that is a general concern that if they're healthy now, they won't necessarily stay that way. So it would be good to get in a little more permanent tree starting to grow. I like the fact that you're having garden species. I do want to make sure there's a lot of color, though, that it's not, you know, it seems like a number of them are sort of in a similar color palette almost. And I was trying to look here to see if you're actually using flowering shrubs or not.
We are. We're using a rose, a nearly wild rose, and then Diablo ninebark, which is also flowering. And the rose is not currently, I don't think, in the landscape palette. We're using the Diablo ninebark because it is used on the perimeter landscaping. So we are using two different kinds of flowering shrubs right now.
What, are the rest of them going to be non-flowering shrubs, or?
They're, I guess I would say so, if they do flower, they're very minimal. So there's a low-grow sumac. It's also called fragrant sumac, and that-
That gets colorful in the fall.
It does, yeah. It's lovely. And then there's a taller version of the sumac, tigrai, which has a yellower leaf even in the summer season. So, and those are in two different locations. The low-grow sumac is on a steep slope behind the target wall. It's a very good spreader, so it's going to be good for retaining that slope back there.
If it's anything like the sumac that I've had around my house over the years, it's more than a very good spread. It's almost a weed. I hope it's not that kind. But I do like the adding of the flowers in. And, you know, I don't want to look at all the cars and things, but I also like the fact that it's not just going to be a monochromatic green, that there's going to be color. And, you know, the native grasses and stuff are nice, but those too can overwhelm very quickly a garden and take out the flowering species. So is there going to be some ongoing thing to keep these grasses back to where they're supposed to be so that in five to eight years, you don't have only grass and very little flower?
You know, in terms of the maintenance of these things, currently, there are some of these ornamental grasses, and I mentioned the shrub that they're using, and it's been going well in terms of maintenance. And, you know, this is an investment on their part, certainly in a new landscape typology. And so there is going to be a certain amount of more, in some ways, required, but we've been working really closely with the mall's maintenance, the facilities people, to talk about the new requirements for this. And there are moments of splash, certainly, around where, you know, you get the most bang for your buck- your buck at bigger entries. So, they're, they're good at handling that.
Where they have flowers, it's been good. I just know in my office, it's about 10 years old, and the grasses have taken over and rooted out almost every other flower, where it's a, it's a constant battle to try to keep color back. And the grasses where they belong, they've gone into trees, they, you know, just, you name it. And it's not a thing that you can do every five years. It seems to be a thing that you fight two or three times a year. So, it's pretty high maintenance. And I would hate to see the flowers go simply because the grasses are so very sturdy and vigorous, I guess you could say.
Councilmember Case?
I don't know if I have questions. I have some concerns, I guess. I absolutely like the beautification part of it. I think if you drive around the Twin Cities or even across our country, you see malls that, depending, particularly if they're down around Atlanta or whatever, but different climates, who have amazing landscaping, and it is beautiful. I just, I guess I'm rhetorically wondering, and I'm not a landscape architect, why some trees can't be trimmed up and the understory be planted to beautify it. I mean, generally, I would err on the side of not taking any tree out unless it's ill or not doing well. But they've taken a long time to grow. They were put in there for a reason. And I'm sitting here looking at the view from a regional center road, looking at the, excuse my voice, I'm suffering with a little bit of a cold here, but looking, I think, the movie theater view there. And you see the trees along the inside ring road, which will grow. So, the whole concept of opening it up, the view shed, I just, I guess we're going to be fighting that, taking out trees pretty much forever. And then, I wonder, too, is there another way, I mean, once you get inside into the ring road system, it's all opened up. So, it's not a question of not finding your way. That's the way we engineered it, is to get in there, and then you drive around until you find your spot. I would like the mall to be viewed, though, out from highways as beautiful, as becunning. So, I, I mean, I very much like what I'm looking, I wish I could, I don't know if you could put that view up, but the regional road view that you have there, I like that a lot. I just, I just, I'm wondering out loud why so many trees need to be taken out, and could they have been incorporated more into current landscaping by trimming up, making them more canopy, redoing the understory landscaping to make it, to accomplish the beautiful effect without getting rid of trees that basically, we as a city have been growing, I don't want to say we've been growing around the mall, the mall's been growing around the mall, but, but we've been growing these for 35 years. And in many cases, it looks like some of them are diseased or not doing well, but many are healthy, and they're being taken out for the view shed. And I, again, I wonder if that could be accomplished in another better way. It's a rhetorical question.
Yeah. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this? Okay, hearing done. Do you want to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilmember Case?
I guess I just kind of want to know about process here. I, I don't want to, like, vote this down. I'm not terribly happy with voting it up. So, do we have flexibility to have staff get in there a little bit again, bring it back? If we do, and I'm just speaking, all I've really heard distinctly is from Nancy, so I guess I'd like to hear from the other three. But might there be, are we on the right track, but might there be a way to tweak enough that we can accomplish some of our concerns about tree loss, and yet accomplish all the concerns they have about beautifying the area?
So, maybe before the other councilmembers weigh in, the answer is certainly staff could continue to work with the applicant. There's a couple of different ways to approach that you've done in the past. Depending on, you know, what the applicant may be willing to discuss tonight or at a future date, you've had, you know, you've continued items for a future first reading. Depending on, sometimes there are minor changes proposed, and you've actually approved first reading because second reading needs to come back to you. And you've asked for conditions upon approval of first reading that can come back at second reading. So, you have several options tonight as a council in how you would want to move forward. But whatever direction we're giving to staff on this project, we would certainly work with the project proponent to bring back a project that can be approved.
I guess I'd like to hear from some others.
Sure.
Yes, you can.
Yeah, I have some comments, too. Do you want to go first?
No, you go ahead.
Okay. I actually, I like a lot about the proposed changes. I like that, as Councilmember Nelson mentioned, that it's colorful. I also think that it looks like a commercial center, which is exactly what it is. But I defer to my colleagues who have served on the, both of you served on the tree committee, our very first tree committee. So, I always care about your sensitivity toward that. So, maybe there's a balance. I think, Ron, you were going this direction. Maybe there's a balance where we remove the sick ones, but maybe there's still some that are strategic that give the mayor the kind of look she's looking for, but still allows for the color. But I don't mind being able to see a commercial center. I think it's important.
Right, right. I just have a few comments. I, I love the mall. I think there's a great mix of shops. The restaurants are wonderful. The place is booming. You drive by there, particularly on the weekends or evenings. It, the parking lot is packed. It's difficult to improve on the amenities that are offered there. And if I were to pick anything to change about the mall, it would be exterior stuff. So, I was very excited to hear that this proposal was coming up. But when I started looking at it, I was kind of disappointed because my thoughts of what I would do with the exterior, and I'm not a landscape architect like you, but I would, if anything, increase screening from flying cloud drive, so we don't see the seas of cars in the parking lot. For some reason, that west side does not have the berms that a lot of other commercial areas in Eden Prairie has, have. There's not a whole lot of vegetation to protect your view of the, of the seas of cars, particularly anything that would provide any screening in sort of a year-round way. If you go interior to the ring road, the vegetation is really sparse. And there are, you talked about other malls and other parts of the country that have a lot of trees, even within the parking areas. I'd like to, the second thing that I would have, would do is add colorful planning, so I'm glad to see that that's what you're doing. The important thing about that, of course, is maintaining those so that they always look nice, because if they are replacing bushes or trees, and they're not consistently kept up, we're losing in that respect. The third thing is I would enhance pedestrian access, especially from the east side of the mall and the south side, provide bike racks and things like that. Here, I did see one mention of a bike rack, and it was in an alternative proposal for one area. So, those things aren't being addressed. When I drive by the mall, I feel like you can see into it really well, because there is virtually no berming. There is a purpose to a ring road, and I was telling this to Councilmember Case earlier. When you're going down flying cloud drive at 50 miles an hour, you're not supposed to see what you want and boom, get off the highway and get into the mall at just the store that you want to. The purpose of the ring road is get off the 50 mile an hour road into a 25, 30 mile per hour ring road, so you can calmly move along the mall and find where you want to go. None of the small retailers have exterior signs. It's all big retailers. And the big retailers are identified in signage as soon as you turn off the ring road. There are directional signs to those. So, to me, I kind of, I'm really not compelled to take down any trees to see better views of buildings. I'd like to have more screening, actually, so that we don't see all of the cars in the parking lot. I don't mind seeing the tops of the buildings, that's fine, but the seas of parking kind of bother me. And I think that there are good things about this proposal, but when, when you say things in the proposal, new gardens and tree plantings are designed to screen at multiple levels. And then, when I look at the renditions, the proposals, and the existing conditions, what I see are trees coming out, and I see more view of parking lot. I don't see less. And, you know, you might plant a tall perennial, but it's going to die down in the fall and take a while to come up in the spring, and we'll have views of the parking lot. So, I think we can do better than this. I mean, I'm really concerned about the views of the seas of parking and the lack of pedestrian walkability. So, those are my thoughts. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind this going a little further and coming back. I will admit that if you are going to try to trim some of the trees, for some trees, there are winter trimming periods that are the best. So, I don't think we can let this go forever.
They've already done some trimming.
Yeah. But if you're going to do more, you know, sometimes March is when you trim certain kinds of trees. I think some of the evergreens and such are too tall. They almost look sort of sparse and like they're maybe getting to the end of that particular kind of tree's good health years. And there probably are some that need to come down. I think definitely the ash should come down. I love your idea about it, putting some, changing the parking to put some occasional trees in. I think a lot of your shoppers would love that in the summer months.
Keep things cooler.
And it would cut back a little bit on the view of cars by seeing, you know, some shade and light and things. I don't know how easy that would be, but I would think that might be a good potential way to put back some trees that would keep things and plus put in a nice amenity. I certainly would appreciate having an occasional tree, though you can bet that every tree will have a whole ring of cars parked around it. And I, I think it would be nice to have some bike racks, you know, as we're trying to push them, and it's a good time to, obviously, they have to go a little closer to the store, but it would be a good time to add them. I, you know, I'm not totally concerned about the trees going down, if they're not healthy or if they're getting to the end of their lifespan. But I guess I would like to look at whether some could be trimmed a little bit or, or replaced with something that's going to serve the similar purpose to it in some cases. You'd almost have to see a planting plan going out, you know, to see the height and stuff. But though I would like this finished reasonably quickly without, you know, huge amounts more money spent, but I think that it might be able to be done just a little bit better. But I'm not going to say every evergreen along the way if they're sort of having drooping branches and things are necessarily, every one of them has to be kept. Just the healthy, nice ones.
I have a question for staff. It's probably for you, Mr. Maya. When they did their calculations for tree loss, they didn't, it's not based on the trees in the planting areas that we're talking about. It's based over the trees and the entire properties. So, if they're removing 11.43 percent of the trees on the entire site, half the trees in these particular areas, what are the ramifications if they need to remove, they come to us for tree removal in a different area in the future?
Your honor, councilmembers, I believe that it was looked at with regard to the specific areas and the losses and additions in those areas. So, I remember 50-some trees removed and 42 replaced, or something like that, with a net loss of 15. So, my understanding is that, that's just in these specific areas. So, it doesn't affect the rest of the site. Am I misunderstanding that?
Well, they've got the calculation based on 446 trees on site, but we were just told that there are 100 and some in these areas.
That doesn't make sense anyway, because their tree ordinance is caliber inches. It's not trees.
Right. Right. But when they, excuse me. When they look at the net loss in these areas, we're looking at 15 trees, is my recollection.
But that's-
But with regard to the cal-
Yeah, because it's caliber inches.
Mm-hmm. With regard to the caliber inches, you're correct. That, that's the way that we look at tree replacement, and they are meeting that, is my understanding.
Okay. So, what is the threshold that we will allow in terms of caliber inches of significant trees?
Excuse me?
So, do we have a, I'm trying to remember, it was a long time ago, we were on that committee. Do we have a limit on the number of caliber inches that can be removed, or is it just if they remove-
It escalates.
More, it just escalates, yeah, the replacement?
Correct. It's a kind of a sliding scale of removement and replacement. So, you have to basically do more replacement if you're removing more. You can have some losses, and we don't count diseased trees as needing to be replaced. So, they have been given some compensation there, I'm sure. I wasn't involved, as you can probably tell, in the details of the tree replacement calculations on this one, but I have been told that it does meet our ordinance.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Ho.
Oh, you know, I think that the new plans, in my eyes, look very nice. I think it's, you guys have done a nice job in, in making it more beautiful, adding the color, I think will be a big, big benefit. And some variation in, you know, right now, it's basically all trees. I think having the shrubbery, having the flowers, I think that's going to, you know, improve the diversity of the plants, and I think it'll add to the, the beauty of, of the landscaping. I, I'm a little concerned that we're getting into a little bit too much nitpicking and, and design by committee here. I think we have to, you know, kind of watch. It's hard, it's easy to do, but I think we have to watch as a body that we make sure that we're, you know, we're, we can give broad goals, but to start saying, well, you know, I want more of this color, I want more of that color, and, you know, I think that's, it's hard to do that as a, as a body. And I think we have to be a little careful in, in not getting, falling into that, into that trap. So, I think if, if, you know, given some of the goal ideas with maybe more screening of, of parking, making sure that the parking is better screened, I think we can send, let's send staff back to, to work with the proponent and maybe make some, make some minor adjustments to, to that, and try to, try to achieve those goals without getting too prescriptive in, in how we want to, how we want to state that.
All right. Is there a motion?
May I just address the council in there one more time?
Yes.
Thank you for all your comments. I just want to say that, you know, we are taking this all in, and as I mentioned, we are open, you know, to hearing your perception. That's, I was just saying this to our client, it's a hard business to be in trying to control perception. It's a very tricky and personal thing, and I really appreciate all your comments. We, you know, really focused this project, as you said, on the outside, not, not the inner ring road. And I understand what you're all saying about the parking lot screening. And I think the most effective screening would be on the inside, on those sort of islands or in the parking lot. But we, you know, we drew the line at what we were dealing with. But that being said, you know, if, if there is an opportunity for us to come back to you with, you know, once we've considered maybe the areas that are drawing your attention the most, and understand, you know, what we, if we missed something in terms of the screening, you know, as I said, we tried to walk that line and find the areas and replace. But the selections of removal were, you know, there are moments. We're not, we're not clearcutting. So, I think it's really looking at those moments where we're taking out the trees and, and what we're revealing behind it.
Nancy, is your suggestion that we might maybe vote on this tonight positively and then send it back before a second reading? What's your thought?
Well, I mean, it's up to the council what they would like to do. I'd like to postpone any action on it until there's some discussion. That's what I would, I would prefer.
Well, as part of, as part of the motion, we could make that, you know, we direct staff to prepare the development agreement and incorporate staff and commission recommendations and council conditions. And as part of those conditions would be to go back and, and work with staff and to try to accomplish those. And then, at the second reading, we would have the opportunity to, you know, to either accept or reject.
Yeah. I think we could actually ask them to bring back the second reading to the council instead of going on the consent list. That way, we wouldn't slow the process down. There's nothing that says second reading has to be in consent. And so, if with it, we ask for it to come back to council, I'd be very happy doing that, to get it going along.
I think we're close enough. I think-
Yeah, me too.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. And, you know, hopefully, there can be something done to provide additional screening for the parking. done to provide additional screening for the parking. You know, I'm just saying anecdotally and personally, I drive by that mall sometimes, and I don't turn in because I look in and see all the parking and think I'm gonna come back some other time, you know? If the parking were screened, I'd probably turn off the highway, get on the ring road, and, well, I'm there, I'm committed. I'm going shopping today. So, I think it's in everybody's best interest to get that parking screened. Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion. I would approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development, district review, and zoning district review within commercial regional service zoning district on 35.32 acres and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions and bring it back, the second reading back to council, not on the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The next item on the public hearing list is the first reading of an ordinance amending city code chapter 11 relating to planned unit development and site plan review processes.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a ordinance revision that is coming forward from staff that was based on discussions throughout 2015 and in workshop and council meeting, related actually, kind of a spinoff from our transit-oriented development ordinance. Through stakeholder outreach, discussions with businesses, and discussion, discussions with council, we saw some opportunities within our site plan approval process and our planned unit development process to streamline processes a little bit more clearly. You may remember at the last council meeting, we had some similar updates to some of our city code language. So, more specifically, a few examples of that that you see in the proposed first reading of the ordinance would be, and they're in cases where an applicant meter exceeds city code, let's say with, with the site plan review with parking. The, they have, let's say, 400 parking spaces, and they could have 380, and they only want to reduce 10 spaces. They're still within city code, and there's a feeling to kind of streamline that process that that approval could be done administratively. There are other examples that you could see based on the percentage of improvement. There are possibilities where other projects could come straight to the city council, placed directly on the city council agenda, as opposed to the full process through the planning commission, that are a little higher threshold, obviously, than what I mentioned with administrative approval in, in those same areas when it comes to, you know, possibly, again, minor updates and revisions to PUDs and to site plan approvals. So, this is something that was talked about with the council and, and workshops and meetings that you were agreeable to bringing forward. And the plan commission did review the ordinance and recommended its approval to the city council 5-0 at the November 9th meeting. And the staff can certainly answer any questions that you may have regarding this ordinance update.
Questions for staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this ordinance?
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance amendment to city code chapter 11, section 11.03, site plan and architectural design review, and 11.44 relating to planned unit development review process and adopting by reference city code chapter 1 and sections 2.99 and 11.99, which, among other things, contain penalty provisions.
Second.
Any discussion needed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next item is the fee schedule ordinance. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm gonna quickly kind of put C and D together. The, the C is the upcoming fee schedule for 2016 for the approval of all of our fees that are required in, in ordinance, in ordinance form. D is separate action related to all the fees that the council approves by resolution. And there isn't a public hearing that's required of fees by resolution, but past practice of the council is to put all changes to all rates and all fees to the community and to a public hearing in, at the December meeting. So, the, the C, the, the request is for a first and second reading because by unanimous approval of the council, both readings would pass tonight. If it was not unanimous, only the first reading would pass. As it relates to C, so I'll cover that now. As I said, these are the fees that are typically by ordinance, and those would be the types of fees that you see in zoning applications, building permit applications. They don't number as many as the fees by resolution, but the entire list, first, you actually have the list of what are all the, the fees, and then you have an entire list of what the changes are from the previous year. And you're gonna see both in the fees by ordinance and the fees by resolution that there's an adjustment to many of the fees, but they're well within kind of that 1%, 2%, 3% rate of inflation. If there are certain development fees that are higher, that's because we adjust those every two years when we do the two-year budget. So, if you saw certain fees that are, that are going up 6% in kind of that building code development area, it's because we do 6% every other year than, as opposed to 3% each year. So, again, the, this public hearing on item C is for an update to fees by summary ordinance or by ordinance.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Getchell? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the fee schedule?
I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first and second readings of the ordinance updating the fee schedule for administration of official controls and adopt resolution approving the summary for publication.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item we need a vote on is the resolution updating the fee schedule for city services, which you had already addressed.
Mary, and again, to add a little bit more detail. Again, these are those fees that are related to many of our services, community center membership fees, fees related to park and recreation programs, probably most importantly, too, fees for many of our enterprise funds, our utility fees, our sewer fees, water fees, storm sewer fees. So, you reviewed several of these in detail at the last workshop, and you also know that we do five- and 10-year plans on our enterprise funds. So, we've actually forecasted our budgets, revenues, and expenditures on our fees and rate projections, five, seven years in advance. And we do sometimes have to tweak those. But again, tonight, the, the 50 pages in, in this part of the packet are related to all those fees by resolution that aren't in ordinance.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I have one question, not so much about the actual fees, but I've heard some people that live outside of the Eden Prairie but work in Eden Prairie, you know, say that, like, some of the fees for memberships, say, you know, they seem so high for people outside of Eden Prairie. And I said, well, you work in Eden Prairie. And they say, well, but I live outside. Is there any way we could send something around to the businesses to remind their employees that if they work in Eden Prairie, they count as an Eden Prairie resident for membership fees and such? I'm not sure. And I know we do it every once in awhile, but I'm not sure that it's necessarily getting through.
Do they qualify? That's a question.
Well, I thought it did. The employees qualified. No?
Yes, if they live or work. That's correct.
So, if they work in Eden Prairie, you know, say, they work at one of the big company headquarters in Eden Prairie, you know, but they live in some other city around, they still can join as the equivalent of an Eden Prairie resident, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's what I always thought it was. I don't think that's well-understood. Obviously, the council is saying that-
No, and I think, you know, at first, I thought you might have been talking about any fee. So, I think the-
No, but-
We want to clarify, you know, we're talking about community center membership, because there are certain fees.
Any equivalent to that.
Well, I, I mean, there are certain fees, like, for instance, in our cemetery, you know, whether you, if you work here but don't live here, there is a non-resident fee, and that is different. But you're correct about the community center. We can certainly look into that. We have different avenues of outreach and communication, and we want to. We've been increasing our membership. We have an update at the end of the meeting on our aquatics addition, and the more we can get the word out on that, we definitely will.
Yeah, and, you know, obviously, phase two is still coming up this year, but by the end of the phase two, I think there's going to be a very desirable thing for, you know, even people that live a little further away. But from chatting with a few folks, I don't think that's understood by many. Maybe there's some companies that are real good about it.
No, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the resolution on the fee schedule?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the 2016 fee resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Finally, we've got the 2016 budget, it should be, right?
That, that's correct, Mayor. This, that's a typo. So, tonight, we are considering approval of the 2016 tax levy and budget. So, before we have the public hearing, finance manager Sukha Cheever and I would like to do an, our annual overview of the budget prior to the public hearing and any questions that you may have. And then you'll see on the, on the report to the city manager, it's actually the next item on the agenda, then that is where we would address any action on the resolution for the budget. So, we could start with Ms. Cheever.
Thank you, Mr. Getchell. Mayor, councilmembers, member of the audience, I'm pleased once again to present information on the 2016 proposed budget. And hopefully, that screen will come up there pretty soon. But just to let folks know, there's other, oh, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to solicit input on the budget for the next year from the public. It is a requirement of state law that we hold this public meeting, and it's held after the property owners have received their proposed property tax statements. Other public meetings that are being held on their proposed 2016 budgets include Hennepin County on December 1st, the Eden Prairie schools, December 15th, and the Met Council on December 9th. And the state is actually not required to have a hearing for their general state property tax. This just gives a history of the market value of all the property in Eden Prairie. And you can see 2016, our property value, that's kind of hard to see on the screen, sorry about that, but the, our property value, our market value is 9.6 billion in 2016, and that is a 6.1 increase over the previous year. So, we had nice growth in our market value. So, this is a summary of the proposed 2016 budget. The total budget is proposed to increase 3.5%. The general fund is increasing 3.9%. Debt service is actually going down a bit for 3.1%. The capital levy is increasing to $100,000 and increasing 4.9% for the total of 3.5%. So, this is, provides a summary of the general fund revenues. The tax levy is going up 3%. Property tax revenue is going up a tidgeless due to changes in delinquent tax revenue, but basically, property tax revenue is going up 3%. Licenses and permits are flat, so development revenue for building permits is going up about 6%. But as you recall, last year, we also budgeted for the new point-of-sale program that we did not implement, so we pulled that out of the budget. So, that makes that budget flat, even though we are collecting more development revenue next year. Intergovernmental revenue is increasing 17% or about $180,000. So, we had some increases in police and fire state aid. Those do change periodically. They're based on insurance premium tax that everybody pays on their insurance premiums, and that's allocated out to all the cities and also some other miscellaneous grants that we were able to budget for. Other revenue is going down a bit. That includes some fines and forfeit money and also some interest rate revenue that's going down. Then the transfer in is also decreasing a bit. There's less one-time items in the general fund budget. So, the total budget's going up. The most important part is that property taxes are 73% of the budget with charges for services at 13% and license and permits at 8% are the biggest pieces of the revenue budget. This provides a summary of the general fund expenditure budget. The total budget's going up 3.9%. And without the addition to the aquatics and fitness center this year, that total would be going up 3% instead of 3.9%. A majority of the increases in the general fund are for the wage and benefit changes and also some changes for our internal service funds for fleet and facilities and some IT charges. Otherwise, some other larger increases, next year is an election year, so we have $120,000 to run the elections for next year. Park and recreation's going up 7%, but again, without the expansion, that would be about 3.8%. Fires going up 1.6%, but that's because we pulled out the point-of-sale program, so that would be going up 3.9% otherwise. And those are the significant increases to the changes in the expenditure budget. So, again, a pie chart shows the breakout of that, with police being the largest portion of the budget at 31% and park and recreation is next at 26%, and public works at 14, fire at 13, community development at 5, and administrations 10% of the budget. So, this is a debt summary of the debt levy for next year. So, we are able to keep our debt levy basically flat. It's going down about 3%. We have one debt levy coming off, and that was for the special assessment bonds for the improvement that was made at Mitchell Road and Technology Drive a few years ago. So, that's coming off. Otherwise, the debt payments are pretty stable overall. This is a summary of the proposed property tax levy. The total property tax levy is increasing 2.6%. The general fund's increasing 3%. The capital's increasing 4.9, which is 4,600 to bring that up to $100,000. And debt is going down a bit, so the subtotal increase is 2.6%. When you take into account that our fiscal disparities distribution actually went down this year, instead of going up, the net property tax levy is increasing 2.9%. This is the tax impact to property tax owners. So, for the median value home, that's valued at $360,300, and that's a 4% increase in property value from the previous year. The property tax increase is actually flat, so they're paying the same amount in taxes that they did the year before, that 1,173. For an apartment building valued at $5 million, it's going up $256 or 1.3%. And for a commercial property valued at $2 million, it's decreasing about a little over $200 or 2.6%. I'm sorry, 3.1. Nope, looking at the wrong thing. 2.6%. This is the total property tax impact. So, this includes Hennepin County, the school district, and the other taxing districts. So, for residential property, it's increasing $58 or 1.2%. For apartments, it's increasing 2.6%. And for a commercial property valued at $2 million, it's decreasing 3.1%. And this shows the property tax distribution for a median value home. And you can see 25% of the property taxes paid goes to Eden Prairie, 35% to Hennepin County, and 33% to the school district. And this shows the distribution for commercial property. And you can see that quite a bit goes to the state general tax at 26% and also fiscal disparities at 29%. So, the city actually ends up getting 11% of the property taxes paid for a commercial property. And this summarizes the monthly cost of city services for the median value home. So, the total is $97.75 a month. $90.52 of that's for the general fund and $7.23 a month for the debt payments that we need to make. And that just shows the breakout by each one of the departments in the general- each one of the departments in the general fund. So, Administration's 870, Community Development 484, Park and Rec 2358, Police 2850, Fire 1192, Public Works 1298 for that $90.52. And I will turn it over to Mr. Getchow.
Thanks, Sue. Sue does so well if she goes over kind of those detailed numbers and kind of a lot of the what's a part of the budget. And we'll also note that we've had a document that's in the packet, and it's kind of been a working document all year long. It starts early in the summer, and it goes through the different council workshops, and it shows the development of the budget over time. But when I speak from maybe a higher level, as we get toward the impact of all this, this is a year-long process. So, if you look at the next slide, you'll see that our budget process begins at the early part of the year. And again, this is a two-year budget process. You're adopting tonight a 2016 budget, but we put together a 2016 and 17 budget. And that really started with the development of work plans and a review of a community-wide survey that we did to gauge the level of satisfaction with city services. Following up on that survey, the council will meet earlier in the year to discuss different goals and strategies, leading into the review of the financials of the year before. And then when we get into the summer, we really begin to prepare the nuts and bolts of that budget. And I've had people say, because tonight, this is a state-required public hearing, I was wondering, I could certainly come to this meeting in December, but doesn't, wouldn't there be more relevance to kind of weighing in or providing some input in the summertime? And we agree with that. And this year was the first time that we put quite a bit of information about our budget on our website, and actually created the topic on our City Connect online webpage. And I'm going to show a little bit more of that later on. And then you lead into the fall, where you need to set your preliminary levy and budget. And as you know, tonight's action, you can adopt the budget that's given to you, and you could actually lower it, but you cannot raise that levier budget. So, the ceiling is really set in September. And then we spend some time toward the end of the year with many of our enterprise funds and following up on the budget. So, I think it's always really important to note how much of a year-long process this is. Again, in that early part of the process, the budget is built upon a little bit on the feelings of the services and what service levels that we should have. So, you'll see the summary, the key findings of our latest community survey, had a high level of satisfaction with our services, which leads us to believe that we should continue to budget at our current service levels and in some way provide enhancements at a positive value. So, you'll see comments about being a safe community and having our city services rated highly and enjoying a high quality of life, but also wanting to see some improvements in our sense of community. So, that's something that we built into the goals of the budget. And there were six, actually nine, main goals of the budget that were built into some of that detail that Sue provided. And that was, again, to kind of enhance, actually enhance service levels in public safety and our infrastructure, making sure we preserve city service levels and resources in all other areas, and continue to maintain a highly engaged workforce. So, then, we also have goals related to continually reviewing our service efficiencies and our innovations, and to be in a positive relative position compared to other communities. I'll get to that last goal with a few slides toward the end. But it has been commented that our budget would be anywhere from 2 to 4 percent higher than it is, if not for some of the innovations and efficiencies that we found. So, we've been able to use, you know, a lot of new technologies out there to not only enhance the service, to provide it more hours of the day at a quicker pace. So, we see a lot of that in what we provide at our front desk. And also, you know, the 2040-15 program that's coming to an end is an example of how we've been able to save hundreds of thousands of dollars over the last 10 years, that program ends in 2015, on our facilities and our fleet. And so, as we get to January and February, we're actually going to be celebrating the conclusion of that project, and then we'll be talking about in February what the next phase is, what's our next sustainability project. But again, I can say we've realized hundreds of thousands of dollars of savings to our bottom line. And again, with that continual review, we also want to, you know, keep our image in terms of our service delivery high. So, I think a good example of kind of all that rolled into one would be our snow removal program. We've found ways in the last two or three years to enhance technology, to provide a better, quicker, more comprehensive service that would be noticed at the state and national level, providing that service. And people are seeing that, and they're adopting some of those standards. So, we're delivering the high-quality, everyday service that people judge us on. It doesn't get any more to the meat and bones of a city government than water and sewer, public safety and snow removal. But you can find ways to do it efficiently, effectively, without adding a lot of dollars to your budget. So, that's probably a really good example of all that rolled into one. And in sense of community, that's kind of been a newer goal, and that really relates to how we could increase people's connectedness to the city and the city government. So, we've done, and the community itself. So, we've had enhancements to many of our city events. We've added city events. We're talking about very high-level design standards that we have in the community, city entry monument signs. The Spirit of Eden Prairie Awards today was a good example of trying to build that sense of community with a new program, investment in our historic properties. So, there's just a lot of different, very cost-effective or no-cost initiatives that you can build into your budget to build that sense of community. So, we're going to continue to look at ways to do that as well. So, I mentioned earlier that we have been engaging our residents in the budget process. And one way we did that later in the summer was to use our City Connect webpage to get feedback on the budget. And we produced a series of videos, one for each department, that we put out to the community. And we were able to reach through Facebook, City Facebook page, and our e-news, 13,000 or between 13,000 and 14,000 people to see the detail of the budget and to see how they could provide feedback and weigh in. Frankly, we didn't get a lot of comments, but it's good that we got a lot of information out there. So, one of the videos I'd like to briefly show before I show some of the impacts is the Police Department budget overview video, and it kind of gives you a feel for some of the information that Sue provided, and the outreach that we had to the community to weigh in on the current budget.
Community safety plays a large role, and why residents say Eden Prairie is a great place to live. 96 percent of Eden Prairie residents feel safe in their neighborhoods. They also report feeling safe in other areas of the community, such as retail stores and parking lots, on paths and walking trails, and in parks and open spaces. That's wonderful news for the Eden Prairie Police Department, whose mission is to protect and serve the community through active and professional engagement. Of all city employees, police officers have the most contact with residents. Eden Prairie police officers frequently interact with our youngest and oldest residents to discuss crime prevention and other safety concerns. You'll see them at community events, local schools, and neighborhood gatherings. The Police Department's annual 1990 event encourages neighbors to gather for food and fun, building a stronger sense of community and safety. Our prepared and well-trained police department employs 66 sworn officers and 30 civilian staff, in addition to several part-time seasonal community service officers, and 30 volunteer police reserves and chaplains who perform community service tasks. 93 percent of residents rate the quality of their police services higher than the national benchmark. Of the city's proposed 2016 budget of $45.8 million, approximately 29 percent is allocated to the police department. This means the average Eden Prairie homeowner pays approximately $29 per month for services that include law enforcement, crime prevention, responding to medical emergencies, emergency preparedness, criminal and special investigations, safety education, 911 dispatching, and community programs. To learn more about the proposed 2016 city budget, visit edenprairie.org/budget. In 2016, the Police Department's initiatives will enhance the safety of its employees and the community they protect and serve. These include proactively investigating reports of human trafficking in Eden Prairie, as well as creating a street crimes unit to investigate suspected prostitution and low-level drug crimes, and increasing the department's capacity for conducting crime analysis. The department will also work to reduce the injuries and recovery time of its officers through healthy living incentives. Be sure to watch the rest of the budget videos focused on the city's core service areas, and how each department's budget contributes to achieving the goals established by the City Council. And don't forget that we want to hear from you. Your input will be collected until late this fall and used to define the final budget presented to the City Council at its December 1st meeting. Speak up and join the conversation at edenprairie.org/CityConnect.
So, here we are on December 1st. And if you're so inclined, the discussion has ended on the City Connect page, but anybody can go to that page, open up Closed Discussions, and view the other five videos, which are of a similar nature by department. And I have a couple of slides, too, that kind of reflect kind of the value proposition, we like to say, as it relates to the city budget. So, if you look at the next slide, we're a member of the Municipal Legislative Commission. It's a group of suburbs that have many similar demographics, similar size, population. And so, when it looks, when you look at the tax levy, and I believe this is for '16, so it should say the tax for... Actually, this is the rate. I'm sorry. I'll get to the levy in a second. When you look at the current tax rate that we have of all those cities that are in that chart, we are the third lowest. So, we'd like to continue to say that we are in the bottom third or lower for city taxes. As Sue mentioned, that's 25 percent of your tax bill. It's not your entire tax bill, but it's the city portion of your bill. This is a slide I was talking about earlier. When you look at the proposed levies that are out there for 2016 in those same communities, there is only one community that's proposing a levy that is less than ours. So, with the 2 percent tax levy proposal that Sue mentioned, that's less than the statewide average of 5.2 percent. So, all the cities in the state of Minnesota, based on the September, levies are averaging about 5.2 percent. And I believe the average of these MLC cities is 4.6 percent. And maybe to even add to some of the discussion we've had about being a community that does not rely on state aid, statewide cities that do receive LGA, their proposed levies for the coming year were at 6.3 percent. In non-LGA cities, average levies across the state were 4.7 percent. So, it kind of gives you an indication of those types of communities and the levies that they're looking at. And another program that I go into more depth at previous presentations is a tax-based pool-sharing program called Fiscal Disparities, where a percentage of all the commercial and industrial value is put in a pool and then redistrict, you know, resent out to the communities via a formula. We've been the number-two contributor to that program for quite some time. And whatever your judgment is on the program, because the program exists, and it exists only in the metro area, and actually maybe on the certain parts of the Iron Range, if that program did not exist, a median-valued home, the median-valued home for the coming year, would have a tax that's 8.6 percent less. So, at a minimum, there's that transparency to this program affects your tax bill. And we know, we had a discussion earlier tonight, we had a meeting with our legislators that represent Eden Prairie, and they're well aware of this program. But again, you have LGA, we don't receive that. You have fiscal disparities, and that's something that we contribute to. So, it's important to note how that affects the current tax bill. That being said, if you remember what Sue had in the packet, you're seeing a growth in values. You know, the average valued residential property going up just under 5 percent, but you're not seeing a growth in the tax bill. So, there may be a difference if your value went up even more than 5 percent due to some investment in your property or some other circumstance. You may see a slight increase. But you're also going to see people that are seeing value increases of 1 or 2 percent, and their taxes decreasing. So, if we look at the full picture of the Eden Prairie budget for 2016, we're seeing a very modest budget and levy, one that compares very favorably throughout the metropolitan area. But yet, at the same time, it's one that continues to invest in our service levels. And you could even see from the police video, further investment in public safety to some degree. And we're able to find some innovations to save dollars, but also programs that don't cost a lot of dollars, that continue to bring a value back to the taxpayer. So, with that, Mayor and City Council, you can certainly open the public hearing, and we can answer any questions that you have before we get to the resolution on the budget.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this? No questions? Counsel, any questions?
It's been a long time on this.
Yes.
Been at this for a year. Nice job, staff, too.
Excellent presentation.
Yeah, I would like to say, you know, thank you for keeping our services high and keeping our taxes as low as a rate. And we really appreciate all the innovations that have come through the departments. And it's a wonderful thing to have staff that looks for ways to do things better and costless, and it makes a big difference in our taxes. Thanks.
Is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Payment of Claims. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Lookins.
Aye.
Thank you. We have just a few more things on the agenda. And first thing I would like to mention is that on December 10th, the City Council and the Eden Prairie Chamber of Commerce are having an after-hours business event, and this is, in effect, a town hall meeting between us and the business community. We will have a presentation on the results of our business survey that will be done by Peter Leatherman, and opportunity for questions and answers. And that event starts at, well, 4:30, we'll actually start the welcome and the presentation at about 4:40, 4:45, and that will be over at about 5:30 with a reception afterwards. So, anybody is welcome to attend. You do not have to be a chamber member. It will be at...
Here.
Here?
Here.
Okay. It's here in the Heritage Rooms downstairs. Thank you. We need a resolution certifying the 2016 property tax levy and adopting the 2016 budget and approving the 2016 HRA tax levy. Mr. Getchow.
Mayor, as I said earlier, this is the resolution certifying next year's levy and adopting the budget. So, unless you had any further questions from the presentation, all you need to do is approve the resolution.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution certifying the 2016 property tax levy to be $34 million... Yeah, $34,668,74, and approve the 2016 budget of $45,877,812, as reviewed by the council, and consent and approve the HRA tax levy and budget of $200,000.
Second. Any discussion? I think we've already made some comments. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Mr. Luthammer, Community Center Aquatics update.
Yes, Your Honor, council members. I'd like to take this opportunity to walk you through and update you on the progress that's been made on the expansion of the aquatics and fitness. It's been quite a long time. The planning process started several years ago, and the construction process has been going on for quite a long time. And so, I want to show you through some... And so I want to show you through some photos, what the process has looked like, where we're at today. Want to talk to you a little bit about our construction challenges that we've faced, and also show you some of the events that have already occurred at the Phase 1, and then tell you a little bit more about the timeline that is set to finish the project. Want to recognize three people that are here tonight, though, that have been really important members of our project team. First in the back is Tina Idar, Aquatics and Program Supervisor at the Community Center, Victor Pichati from HGA, who's been our lead architect, and also Brian Recker from RJM Construction that is helping us run the project as well. So they're here if we should have detailed questions or questions, we want to refer to them as we go through the presentation. So first off, we're going to show you quite a few pictures, but if you can see the finer details on this, this is the cover sheet from our meeting minutes that we have on a weekly basis, and it says in the top, number 80. Actually, today, we all attended a meeting that it was number 82 is the number of project meetings that we've had. That also means that every other week, we have an owners' meeting where more of us get together and go into even more details, so there's been 41 of those approximately. So quite a bit of time that we get back together, reassess on a weekly basis, and make sure we're moving along as efficiently and effectively as we can. Showing you some of the construction progress photos, this is now when you'd be sitting in the bleachers, looking across Phase 1 with the two pools. Here's where they are actually doing some work down inside the pools with getting the lane lines in place, and starts to take shape and look like a pool. We are taking another angle here, again, in Phase 1. You're looking up at where the fitness area now overlooks the pool area. Here, we start to see what happens once there's water in the pools and people starting to use. There'll be a few more of these shots as well with other events. The front of the building, and you see it in the very lower left before the landscaping was in place, and the picture in the upper right, I always need to take a double take on that and wonder if it was more of a graphic rendering, but it's a real picture, and you can kind of see the cone in the bottom left. We obviously had some good light, but the front of it, I think, looks really well done from a design perspective, and also with the landscape in place really enhances the front of the building. Part of the fundraising effort from the Fox Jets has been to recognize people through the tile wall, working with Mercury mosaics. And we also carried that theme through for those who attended the Cindy Gallagher dedication. There's also, instead of having what usually might be a bronze plaque, it's a tile mosaic that pays tribute to her. The dryland training has been very popular, used by the Fox Jet swim team, used by the high school swim team, and also some of our training and fitness classes have been using this area as well, so it takes some of the pressure off of the upper fitness studios. As you walk in, kind of the front desk, a little bit of a before-and-after look to it when you come into the main lobby. This is looking back towards the bleachers, and a really nice look, and the colors were somewhat becoming famous for the blue windows, people comment on that. And that was intentionally designed, brought forward by the architect, but also intended as you're a diver and from a diver's perspective, and where you might be turning in the air, and how do you best orientate yourself. And it's great that we have these south-facing windows, but at the same time, that can be an impediment to really locating yourself in space, too. So the different colors of white ceiling, blue background, different shade of blue water is really helpful for the diving community, too. Water fitness has been very popular. One of the things I've noticed, especially as I'm going through there in the middle of the afternoon sometimes between meetings, is when I look in, the amount of midday lap swimmers continues to increase. People are continuing to find out about it and understanding that it's a good quality place to be able to swim. So, you know, we're obviously in a ramp-up phase. We saw that when we had the last edition in 2008, that there is a ramp-up of people understanding what you have, understanding when they can use it, but we're seeing some of that come to fruition even early on in the project. I wanted to put this in, it's a comment from an adult resident who is a swim lesson participant. And a lot of times when we think about our swim lessons, we think about little kids learning how to swim. In this case, an adult wrote in to tell us how happy they were with the instructors. And I wanted to carry that even further because we talk a lot about the physical components of the building and the expansion of the building, but really, it's our instructors, both aquatics, our fitness instructors, our front desk people, that's really what makes the culture of the building. And that's one of the things that we're also known for, is how comfortable people feel when they participate at the community center and how welcome they feel. So this is just another opportunity for us to expand that reach and to give more people an opportunity to learn more skills and to experience fitness programming. Sometimes, the biggest part of the expansion is certainly in aquatics, but one of the areas that we really needed some help, where we were very tight, was in the fitness area. And this really became square footage that could be built on top of some things and expanded in a pretty cost-effective way when you look at it on a square-foot basis. This is the expansion of the fitness area that looks over top of the aquatics area. When I went through there today, this morning, at about, I think it was about 10:30, quarter to 11:00, almost every piece of that equipment was being used. It's a really popular area because you can look out and see some natural light, and so it's, you can also look down and see the pool as well. So quite a few people gravitate to the new spots. This is Fitness Studio C, which is the new studio, so has quite the variety of opportunities because it's adjacent to a large storage area. So after this class where you see all these rowers, those rowers tip up on wheels and go out of the way, and you might see a class that has small weights, might just be more of a Zumba class, so really flexible space for us, and it's been a popular room. This is Studio A, which has always been there since the 2008 expansion, but it got larger. And the key there is we can, some of those classes that people were coming half hour ahead of time to get their spot, we can accommodate some of those more large and popular classes now, so really appreciated by the participants that can get into those classes. Phase 2, you know, we're really at about 75% of construction progress, and so we've got Phase 2 out there. This is actually a photo from today. It's in the zero-depth area, and those structures that you're seeing are what's going to support or be support structures for the play equipment that will be in the shallow-water area. So yet to come, you can see the door in the back, that's where you'd come out of the family locker rooms. The glass in the right back is where you come in between the two pools, where you can move in between both of those. This is also a Phase 2, two photos. The one on the right is the ladder to climb up for the water slide. Just today, the blue sections of the water slide were being delivered and dropped off, and in the next 10 days, they'll be assembled. But to give you some perspective, at the bottom of the ladder, you can see a grown construction worker. So there's a few steps to climb and a few feet to come down into the plunge pool below. So we're excited to get that open, and that's really going to be a family-friendly part of this construction project. You know, I want to tell you a little bit about some of the challenges that we have had along the way. And every project has its change orders that come and go through the project, and some of them are just to really document a small change. Some of them, and I'll tell you about our cost savings that we've been able to hopefully help out with, but to be as transparent as possible, we have pushed the contingency up to the 75% to where we wish it would be when we were 100% done. And it really started off with a couple of big-ticket items. We discovered in initial excavation, we discovered some bad soils, basically a burrow pit, that likely, who knows, 20, 30, 40 years ago, poor soils had been placed there. It wasn't that poor soils were just there, but, so that had to be remediated. And it wasn't a case where we could have slid the building one way or another and avoided it. We did do soil samples. The soil samples didn't discover that piece. Had we known about it ahead of time, we would have still probably had it in the project and had to pay for it. But in this case, it wasn't part of the bid, so there were extra costs to remediating it. There were also extra costs to doing inspections with our testing firms that surrounded that. That really comes to, that in itself comes to close to $100,000 that hit into the contingency. It also triggered, the fourth item down there is winter conditions. It put the project behind so that the block and brick scenario had to occur more time during the winter, which needed heating and special work. And that in itself cost us an additional 160. So those two items right there, a quarter million dollars of our contingency, went away just because of finding that burrow pit and the, kind of the domino effect that it had on it. We also had some assumptions that when we went into the street with some of the plumbing, that there were going to be two openings in one of the structures that were in the street. There was only one, we needed to reroute some of the piping, that was a cost. Also, the rainwater leaders that are up there, that was something that we discovered, they weren't in the plans until after we bid and got going, so we needed to add those in. That's an example of a cost that came in after the fact. When we got to the flooring in that Studio C, all wood flooring, it didn't match with the flooring level in the fitness area, and in order to meet ADA and to do this on a wood floor, it was about a $12,000 change to be able to ramp it in both of those doors so that we would have more of the gentle slope and not a bump, so not only for accessibility, but just people's safety walking in and out. So, you know, and those are things that you do discover, some of those, as we go through construction. Another large one, where the two buildings were originally designed to meet and be fixed together, it was determined that they wouldn't interact independently very well, or that they would better be independent so that if there was movement in one, it wouldn't affect the other. And so that was a large change, that as we're going forward, it made sense, and when you're thinking about it as a 30-year, 40-year building, we want it to be in good shape and not settling differently and impacting each side of the building. So that was a pretty large change that we needed to undertake. I want to tell you about a couple examples, though, where, you know, we as staff were examining things, and we felt like this is just a better way to do it for the long haul. One of them is HVAC changes, and that was about a $30,000 upgrade that we needed to make. And our facility staff really studied the type of HVAC unit that was in the documents, and they weren't as comfortable as they wanted to be with it, and they felt like there was another item out there that could be better for them to be able to understand and operate, and they thought it was a better fit for this facility. And in my estimation, HVAC is super-important in an aquatic center. This is, it's a pretty tough environment to take care of the, you know, humidification and dehumidification and the heating and all of the water pieces to it. So we ended up, we spent extra dollars, about $30,000, but it's somewhat netted out because the method for having to install it was about $30,000 less. It didn't need as heavy as a support. We think in the long run, this is a good decision just because of our ability to operate it better and effectively, and I think cost-wise, because when we can operate it better and effectively, there's some energy savings costs that we have potential for, too. Another one was a foundation method. As we were getting behind in the project, it needed to move a little faster in order to build out one of the walls for the second phase to stay on track or to get a little closer to on track, there was a different method in order to go faster and also with the winter conditions. That was about a $40,000 add, but we really believe towards the end of the project, we should see some of those again as savings. And when I mentioned some of these change orders, too, not all of them, and I'm talking about them in sort of round numbers, not all of them are fully accepted at this point. We, the architect, the construction manager, work with the contractors, and sometimes what the contractor's pricing comes back to us as we disagree with, and we might then say, "We're going to do it on time and materials," or we might come back at them with a different negotiation for that. So to be able to tell you tonight where are we at, at the end of the project, especially when there's about 25% left of it to go, I can't tell you that. Our best estimate will probably be about 3% or 4% over what we had originally budgeted for the project, but there's a little bit left to go. The good news there is, most of the big surprises, I think we're all pretty confident to say, all of the big surprises, those things when you're digging in the dirt and you find those things, those are behind us. With the potential for change orders coming forward now, we'll have some, but they'll be a smaller dollar figure. Saying that, though, our potential for cost savings through some of our change order potentials aren't very great either, so kind of what we have is what we have today in terms of cost savings. But I want to tell you a little bit about that, too, because we wanted to make sure that if we could make some changes that would save some costs, we wanted to do those as well. Without sacrificing what I think is good quality or that thought process of, this is a 30-year, 40-year building, and it needs to last for that long, what isn't on this list is the testing. We have a separate contract with Braun for the testing, and so that has included the soils testing, the concrete testing, any of the materials that get put into place that we want tested for strength or stability, they've done that for us. We've had to spend a little bit more because of that soil correction scenario, but we didn't skimp. We wanted to make sure that our platform was in good shape. We did take on the landscaping internally with our park maintenance staff, and our ICWC crew did a lot of the digging of the holes, and we were able to save quite a bit of dollars compared to what was originally budgeted. There was an opportunity to omit some of the epoxy rebar, and yet, we still were able to determine that in the concrete that it met the strength that it needed to meet, and yet, it was still a good cost saving, so we did that. If you look all around the deck, there's the drain, a few inches wide. That was originally specked out to be in aluminum. We switched that out to plastic, and I actually think that it's more of a comfortable surface to walk across and be on. That was about a $30,000 savings. There's a lot of that that spans around the pool. So anybody that walks out there would never look at it and say, "Why didn't you do stainless? It looks good, it blends in with the tile, its strength is good, it's going to last." So that was an opportunity that we found to make some savings. We did a revision to the lane line storage. One of the things that we have that we found along the way visiting some of the other sites was to store the lane lines in ground. A lot of times, you see them on the big reels on the deck, and they take up a lot of space, and they're really a pain to have there. Originally, it was designed to be cast concrete, and RJM and architects came across another method where it didn't have to be that much of a structure. And so that was also an ability to save costs, and it works, it's going to last, and I think it's a good way to do it. We had an opportunity, too, to redesign and reduce some of the storage of the fitness, and in order to have done that back behind Studio A, we would have needed some pretty good structural pieces to it, to get us kind of a low-level cubby. And when we looked at what we got and what it would cost, when we omitted that, we had a really good cost savings, and yet, we don't really feel like we sacrificed that much on the actual storage that's up there. The redesign I had mentioned on the mechanical units, too, there's a better and cheaper way to be able to do that and still support the units on the roof, and so that was another example of a cost savings. Again, there are many more of these that are small, $200 plus or minus, $1,000 plus or minus. When we went for code inspection, you'll now see a door that to most people would make not a lot of sense that it's there. We had to do it for code, and had it been another five feet one way or the other, we wouldn't have had to do that. That caused us to tear up some of the pavers that were there to put in a new entrance. There you have another 25... There you have another $25,000 or $30,000 that we weren't anticipating going into it. So some of those surprises, certainly contingency is put in there to be helpful. I think we went in with a pretty modest contingency to start with when you look at some of the industry standards. But again, we're tight on that. And likely, as I show you our timeline when we come back, we'll be back telling you the end results and having some other funding source discussions to determine how do we fully pay. I want to walk you through some kind of critical dates. Groundbreaking, June 9th, 2014, about just a little over a year later, grand opening on July 21st of 2015. Swim Jitsu. We had an opportunity through USA Swimming. We were picked one place in the five-state region to host this. And it's really USA Swimming's chance to introduce people to water and to USA Swimming. Hundreds of people competed in this. We brought over 500 people through the building just in that day alone. And it was really our first big event at the facility. We had the first high school swim and dive meet. And I think what's important here, it's one of the first times in a very long time that swimming and diving happen together at the same time. And so we've heard from the high school coaches that that's very meaningful to them and their teams, not only the meets at the same time, but they're able to practice at the same time under the same roof for the first time in a very long time. Many high school girls' meets happened over this fall. The boys' season is just getting started, and so we'll be host to those meets as well. This was the crowd at that high school meet. Fox Jets swim team on October 10th had their first meet. So you see kind of a little smaller swimmers in here. And Tina was at that event. And you get a lot of big smiles of watching some of the kids that maybe are a little bit scared to hop off the starting blocks. But they make it, and they flutter their way across the pool. So good to see all different ages making use of it. Just recently, we had the dedication for the Sidney Gallagher pool naming. And it was a very busy night and a very impactful night, too. So I think that was a group of people that may not have been exposed to the Community Center that came that night. So going forward, timeline moving forward, as I mentioned, I think we're about at that 75% completion. We look to be scheduled to that end of February, early March, to open Phase Two. That never means we're quite through with the project at that point. We still have final walkthroughs. We're going to be working with all the individual subcontractors to make sure we get all their paperwork, their lien waivers, et cetera. We hold 5% contingency. So we don't pay anybody everything until we're fully satisfied that it's done and done right and is sustainable. So we look to be April and May as that project closeout at the point where we would come back at a council meeting and close the project out. So with that, I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Luthammer?
Well, congratulations. It's a beautiful project. Thank you all for everything you've done. And I'm sure with your 123-plus meetings that you've had on this, it seems like it's moving very slowly. But to those of us that aren't over there every day looking at it, it seems like it's coming along fairly quickly. And to think that the second phase will be done this spring, early spring, that's fabulous.
Yeah, thank you. We've received really good comments and feedback, whether it's on the technical side from some of the swim coaches or from some of the parents. We go through, you know, kind of right after school. It almost looks like a little bit of a caribou coffee of all the kids doing their homework in the waiting area before they have swim practice. And so it's, you know, what we've envisioned, we are seeing. And we think more to come.
Well, I think it paid off to have so much user involvement, so much stakeholder involvement in the design and the many meetings that you guys had with our staff and with the community members to find out what was really wanted.
Absolutely.
So thank you very much.
Your Honor, the one last thing, just as an announcement or memory of Jerry Nappick. We learned, some of us at different stages, but most of us not until Jerry passed in October. And Jerry Nappick was a really involved community member. She was on our Parks Commission for quite a few years, as well as she was our chair and one of the best people I've ever worked with on a commission. Before that, she was a really significant involvement with Friends of Birch Island Woods and really helped that organization and stayed with it throughout the years as they've continued to improve Birch Island Woods Park area. I know some of you may recognize or remember Jerry from the board and commission banquets. And Jerry always brought her son, Sam, to the banquets. And Sam, I think, started out coming, and he was about at my waist. And I think right now, Sam is at least my height. And Jerry was really private about her health battle. And so some people in the community are recently learning about her passing. And the people that have learned about it are very sad about that. And she's somebody that will certainly be missed, a person that always looked at what was best for the community. She ran our park commission meetings very well and really took a broad perspective and understood that even though she may be very passionate about certain issues, she really made sure other people were heard about their issues as well. And so she's certainly somebody that we will miss. I know Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom was very close with Jerry as well. And we're very sad as a staff about her passing.
Thank you for those kind words. Appreciate it. Okay, is there anything else to bring up for the council? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.